All orders pre-meeting, departmental overview. Call it a order. Got a presentation of Palatine County Schools Career Workforce Development. All y'all, wherever you want to, wherever you're coming.
Stevens is going to just change the slides here for us to our presentation. May I sit these twenty minutes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we'll talk while we, that's okay. Is that all right?
Oh yeah.
Thank you. All right. I'm Catherine Garrett. I'm the Career Technical Education Coordinator for our school system. And of course, we know Dr. Tiggen, she's our superintendent. Ms. Stevens, she teaches, teaches for tomorrow in early childhood education. Mr. Payne teaches electricity and building trades. What we want to do this evening is just give you a little overview of where we are right now with our career workforce development programs. And have some information for you there if you can review and keep with you if you have any questions after. The food was prepared by Mr. Robertson, our culinary arts teacher and students. He was not able to be with us this evening because he had another event. But enjoy.
They helped on themselves. Thank you.
I let them know. Thank you very much. Excuse me. But one like to begin, we always like to begin with our mission and our vision for our school system. And I begin every meeting with this because I think it is synonymous with our career and workforce development programs. Our career and workforce development programs, this is definitely what our mission always is, is provide high quality, authentic, and inspiring learning experiences for each student, for each individual. And our goal is to empower students to embrace the possibilities of tomorrow so that they can become engaged citizens. So again, this is our mission and our vision. And because it is synonymous with career and workforce development, I always like to begin with this. Just a little information here about where we are with terminology. You'll hear me say often career and workforce development. You'll also hear me say CTE, which is what we've transitioned from, CTE, Career Technical Education, to career and workforce development. Appreciate the leadership of Dr. Tiggen on this and looking as far as where our need is in our community. Because we have transitioned into our focus, which is reflected in our terminology. So as a school division, we transitioned from the use of that terminology to career and workforce development because the view, we want to make sure it is understood and seen by our community. Because it's more comprehensive when we say career and workforce development. We are including all of our stakeholders, our students, our teachers, our parents, business and industry, and our community partners. So you'll hear us say career and workforce development. Some of us been around a while. We remember the transition when it began and use the terminology vocational education. If I may, student Nadi, may I use you as an?
Absolutely.
Definitely want to ask a student to use an example without asking. So Mr. Nadi, when he's a student with us, he was probably in that time period when we actually were transitioning from that verge of vocational to career and technical education. So and now from career and technical education to career workforce development. So these are some of our program areas you'll see in your folder there. It's an orange piece of paper that has all of our program areas. You can see that. But just in general, our ag, we have plant science, animal science, and agricultural mechanics, which we see is actually will eventually become a trade and industry program area with welding. Our kids really, really love welding. We have building trades. Like I said, Mr. Payne works, teaches that. And then all of our other programs there, as you can see.
Who's part of service with the GRTC?
Army. All right. Because Nadi was in fire department or?
I was a volunteer, but that's before they started programs too. But I went through all the building trades all the years.
I think you were, you were a student, you actually were on call. Y'all actually could leave the building.
Yes.
Early day. If I remember, y'all, students who would leave and actually go and help.
I went through the building trades class at the old hospital.
Oh, okay.
Years ago. I can see how long ago. Two, four years, three, four, three.
That rock chiseling?
Yes.
It was good.
Did it have electricity?
We were there together then. But thank you. All right. So these are our program.
Try to get across the pool right now.
All right. Just a little information about us as far as data. We have sixteen full-time high school teachers, two part-time. We teach ninety sections of classes, career workforce development classes. In the middle school, we have six full-time, one part-time. It's shared with science. He also teaches science. And so looking at total enrollment of students taking career and workforce development classes, two thousand five hundred students. So we look at approximately graduating class of about three hundred, a little more. We will see approximately over two hundred students whom we can deem completer, sort of students who've taken two or more courses in a career workforce development program area. So our students do not just see it as, I want to take some technical classes or vocational classes. They see it as, this is what I want to do as my career, and I'm going to take the courses that help me meet my career path. And just a few highlights for our program area, just giving some updates. Again, appreciate Dr. Tiggen's leadership with this. We now offer honors courses for our career and workforce development classes. And these are the classes in which we offer it. And I want you to think about this just a little bit. These courses, as far as how they receive honors credit, I feel like the rigor is more, it's at least if not more rigorous than other academic courses. You'll hear me say other academic because I'm a firm believer that career technical and career workforce development courses are exceedingly rigorous. For students to receive honors credit in these courses, they've taken two-plus years in the content area. They have passed an industry certification assessment, and they've been involved in workplace learning experiences. So that rigor exceeds many, many other academic courses. And why would we want to offer students honors credit in career and workforce development programs? Because we want students to take the classes that they are interested in taking to pursue their career. Let me, and so that they don't feel like they have to make a choice. Let me give you an example. We have students who take vet science, students who are taking nursing classes because they want to go in the medical field. And these students, sometimes, let's say they want to go into vet science, they know that they need a very high GPA to get in Virginia Tech. And so they may feel like, I have to make a choice. I can't take a career and workforce development program if it doesn't have honors weight because I need that GPA to get there. And so by offering this, they not only get the experience to actually go out and work in a vet hospital, they can take an industry certification, they take two years in the program. And not only that, now they feel like, well, they know, I don't have to make a choice now because I can, my work is going to end the field. So our students are very appreciative that they are receiving honors credit in these courses. So that's a change in the last couple of years for us. I've packed a lot on this page because I want you to see it this way. These are our industry certifications that we offer. And you can see, four hundred and seven, this is data from last year, this past year, four hundred and seventy-seven students earned at least one industry certification. These are certifications that adults take and pay for in their career path. With exception of the ASAP and workplace learning. Four hundred and two students earned two or more certifications. So again, just take a look. You've got the Microsoft there. The Wise Financial Literacy, you may think, what is that? Well, it is, it is a certification which students evidence their financial literacy. And what parent would not want to make sure their child is financially literate when they graduate? And we want, right? We want to make sure they're prepared to take care of themselves and their family after they graduate. And again, this is Ms. Stevens. She does the early childhood education and teaches for tomorrow. Again, these students see the certification for the childhood education, they can go out and work, take care of, once they receive that certification. Serve Safe, Culinary Arts. Mr. Payne there, he does the international code council for the electricity as well as the carpentry, correct? Still carpentry, right?
Building trades.
Just a second, just if you would, Mr. Payne, if you tell them why the code is so important or respected in the industry as far as a credential.
When the students are doing their resumes and we have companies that they go in and interview with, the code, every, whether it's a mason, heating and air, electrician, carpentry, all contractors understand what code is because they deal with it every day. If they don't have codes to pass, then they lose their money because they got to fix it and come back. These kids, these tests that they're taking, it's mechanical, electrical, building, when they pass that, they're saying that they can get seventy-five or better on a test that asks them questions about the code. So they're learning how to use table contents, the index, they're doing critical thinking, seeing how that works. Now, the contractors, when I go to them and tell them that they've done that, that really impresses them because they're going to have to get into code when they go into their apprenticeship and start working with that. So it's been, it's been really good. And most of our kids hate it because it's boring, but they understand the relevance of it. And when they talk to some of the friends who graduated and are in the apprenticeship, they appreciate it a little bit.
When we talk to our business partner, partners, they very appreciative of the particular credential of the code. Ms. Stevens, like I said, what she does with the early childhood education, also teaches for tomorrow, which is a program where we train students who want to be teachers. Talk about growing our own. I think Palatine is very much known for many number of teachers who actually went to school there. And we appreciate very much our folks who come back to teach. We welcome folks who grew up here, those who've come in the last twenty years, those who've come in the last five to ten. We are all a community here. We appreciate one another very much as far as whatever one brings. But we appreciate the opportunity to educate children. So that's a specific area that Ms. Stevens works with. Also, take a look, if you would, at the licensure on the right-hand side. We have the nurse aid licensure and the cosmetology licensure. When these students pass this licensure exam, they are immediately employable. I had a student last year who was a senior, she had passed and taken her cosmetology exam as a freshman, as a junior. She was actually had, had it set up a cosmetology station in her house. She was making money as a senior because she'd already earned that credential. It's interesting because she wanted, she said, I'm going to go to college. I'm using this now, but I want to own my own business. So again, she was taking her passion and applying it. I mean, as a senior whom she had not even graduated. I want you all to take a look at that very last one there. This is one that's due for us this year. I'm excited about this one. The IRS Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Tax Preparer Certification. What this is, this is, we're going to, our students actually going to be trained and certified to become official tax preparers. They're going to get a tax prep preparer number where they can file taxes for books. And we're going to offer the service to our community members who are in need of tax services. Really excited about that opportunity this year. So again, great opportunities for our students. All right. Work-based learning opportunities, clinical experiences. We had, again, this is data from last year, twenty-nine students involved in clinical experiences. These folks actually, nurses went into the hospital. Johnston Willis went into the vet hospital in Midlothian. These students are receiving authentic learning experiences right there during their class time, twice a week, right there on the floor in this hospital. Just last week, received an email from the folks at Johnston Willis complimenting and thanking our students for coming there. And for someone in the medical field, who's, we're all very busy, but they're certainly busy, for them to take the time to write that note on that email meant a great deal. But they said that our students really did really well and worked so well with the patients. That's one of the compliments, highest compliments we want to hear. It's a reflection on themselves, their program, and the school system. So we appreciate that. Again, giving back to the community. Also, and I think she wouldn't mind my sharing this. So we have, we have our nursing instructor, Ms. Farrell, our help, she's actually our department chair for career workforce development, and she oversees health occupations. And her husband was in a car accident recently, so he's in ICU at Chippin. And she has been there, but it's very interesting because she said, you know, it's just amazing because every day there's two or four of her former students who are there coming to check on her to make sure that, that she's okay. So it's the idea that, you know, you can go to a facility around here in the medical field without encountering a student who's been trained about in high school. And we all appreciate that. And maybe a little unnerving, you've got a little gown on, then you come in and say, hi, Ms. Garrett. Say, well, give me just a minute. But it's still very comforting, once you get the gown covered up, to know that these students have been well-trained and that they want more than anything to give back. And to show you that they appreciate what you've done is also, you know, to show us their sense. The same is also very true with cosmetology. You probably can't go anywhere here around where you haven't gotten a haircut by somebody who's trained from Pat Beller. So again, students love and appreciate the opportunity to give back to them. So we have, also have internships such as what Mr. Robinson does, teaches for tomorrow. And that's where the students go again during the day. Her students actually go into our elementary schools, make lesson plans, teach under the supervision of the teachers. Mr. Payne can talk a little bit about it if he would, about the youth-based registered apprenticeship. This is a different type of work-based learning. This is where students actually go out, they don't come into the building two days a week, they actually go directly to the work site and work all day long.
Yes, our students in this program, they apply, they're accepted into the program. They, their junior year, they, we work on resumes, they pick out an employer, and then they go and interview. And if hired, we don't mandate, but I highly suggest the summer, they can work the summer and get their feet wet in the summer, they go and they work the summer. When the first day they're on the job and get hired, they are, we fill them out and they register, they're youth registered apprentices. What does that mean? That's kind of new in the last five to seven years. Most of you are familiar with an apprenticeship program. You got to be state-sponsored, state-approved, sponsored by a company. Well, the youth registered apprentices, some of the youth will fall into the cracks. So they might go to work for a contractor. The contractor doesn't register them, doesn't recognize them. Once they go to try to get into an apprenticeship, all the time that they worked is not accounted for. With youth registered apprentice, from day one, every hour they work will go toward their apprenticeship hours for their four-year apprenticeship. The business partners love it. It's a lot of paperwork, a lot of keeping up with, but it's good for the kid that does it. And we've had nothing but success with it. I think that pretty much sums up what it is. It's a good thing, it's something that brought down to state that we do like.
And the students absolutely love that opportunity to get that authentic learning experience, like being out on the job all day long.
Yeah, it's two days a week. I didn't say anything about that. I apologize. So our schedule of the high school Mondays is every period, it's ground holiday, I call it, because it's just one after the other fifty minutes. And then Tuesdays and Thursdays are even days, Wednesday and Friday are odd days. Schedule the students in the work program for just to have me on Wednesdays and Fridays, and that affords them to not come to school, but report to the job site, report to the company they're working for. Sometimes you have some of our students that are working in Charlottesville, they will have to drive to Charlottesville. They'll meet at the parking lot to a company, they go up, and then they come back. They're getting a minimum of sixteen hours a week. That's not all they're doing. They're not just working, they're also building a port, a digital portfolio, writing weekly reflections, turning in their pay stubs, giving me ten pictures with some explanation of what's going on. And at the end of the year, once they finish their portfolio, they present that to, sometimes it's been our counselors, sometimes it's been our administrators, and then they have the signing day. If they, if the company wants them and they want to go with the company.
They are paid.
They're paid, yes. They're paid. I try not to get into the money, but with that youth registered apprentice form, the company has to write down what they're being paid. And we have a variety of pay. My tribe, our business partners, I try not to have too many business partners that are at the low end because I want the kids to have a chance. But you know, you have some of these kids that while they're in high school are making seventeen, eighteen dollars an hour, and I'm sounding like an old electrician now, but they don't know anything but their name, and they barely know that. So it's a good opportunity. It's a good opportunity to get them in there, right? So once they, if the company likes them and they want to continue with that, and I'll say this too, and I'm sorry for dragging so many, much time on this, but a student can work, and I encourage students to go into this program even if they're not sure, because it's a decision they can work through the whole year. And at the end of the year, if, let's say Humphrey Electric has been wonderful to us, if Chip and Dick say, we really want Tommy or Susie. And Tommy or Susie says, you know, Mr. Payne, this has been wonderful, but I think I've figured out something I don't want to do the rest of my life. I think that's a success because they've done it while they're in high school opposed to getting out of high school and trying to figure out what they want to do. So that's a success. It's also a success when they say, we want to do this. So two days a week, they go, Wednesdays and Fridays, and the, it's, they love it. They love it.
Skipped over another example, work-based learning, it was a school-based enterprise, and that's culinary arts, where they do a lot of catering for the community. And they have a kind of little restaurant where the folks can come in, starting a little bit where folks can come in, and meals are prepared by all the students. Horticulture, of course, has a plant sale that we have, so, so school-based enterprise. The last one there, if you take a look at it, the service learning, I think just about every one of our students in career and workforce development programs are involved in some type of service learning. I think just recently about our GRTC folks with the Veterans Day events, we had probably like six or seven events in a couple of days in which they worked. Another example, our health occupation students, they will go down to the elementary school and teach hand washing and hygiene to the little, to the little ones. Our health occupation students will also teach first aid and CPR to our tenth grade students in their, in their physical education classes. So we've got so many, just countless amounts of fundraising and things for the community. So again, giving back to the community. Lots of different types of workforce learning opportunities for our students, depending on which program area they're in. Just a few recognition opportunities. Mr. Payne alluded to our career workforce development signing day. So we brought that back post-COVID the last couple of years. Very appreciative of the opportunity to recognize those students. This past year, we had fifteen students who participated in the signing in the electricity field, building trades field, cosmetology, and agricultural mechanics. Very, very appreciative of those, of our business partners. We cannot say that in, yes, sir.
And then you did the same thing with the armed forces signing.
Yes. And the armed forces had a signing by themselves, and actually that was through our school counseling department. We did not have any students last year in GRTC program who were going into the military. We had some other students who were not in career workforce development programs who did. The previous year we did. We had a student from one of the academies. We're also very excited to bring back our National Technical Honor Society, that is the honor society for our career and workforce development programs. Our students just completed their applications on that. Ms. Stevens co-fairs that, that organization for us. We just each went and talked to the students today, let them know they had met the requirements for the applications, congratulated them, and let them know they're going to have the induction ceremony in December, fourth or fifth.
December fourth.
Thank you.
So we've got forty-five students who have demonstrated excellence in their career and workforce development program areas. One of my students today was very excited, and she was like, this is the first good school news I've been able to bring my parents in years. So it's students who maybe aren't so strong in their traditional academic fields, but when they get into a classroom where they see the benefit of their work, that they get to do something hands-on, that the product is right in front of them, they really excel. And reading their applications, all the things they do are amazing. So really excited about it.
Even as we were reading, we were thinking, they didn't even capture, they don't even think about all that they do. We're like, well, you did it. We're thinking, this kid did this too. This kid's taking this class too. They don't always think to capture everything they can do. But again, we're very happy to recognize those students when we met with them today. Also, recognition opportunities, our students in our career workforce development programs for a single high school town, it's just amazing what our kids accomplish. And they accomplish these things because of their commitment, but they're following the commitment of their teachers and their sponsors. Our kids go as we lead them. And our teachers are passionate about what they're doing. They spend a lot of time in the classroom. They'll be spending a significant amount of time after hours, through after-school hours preparing students for competitions and activities. And our kids do exceedingly well, regional, state, national competitions for our students. Students went to Oklahoma Werwood, Soles Competition this year. That was one of the pictures up there. So kids do very, very well. Mr. Payne's, both his students as well as cosmetology students, who are scheduled to say, just, what's this one, right? With leadership?
Yes. We took eleven of our children off to town. Oh my goodness. Foster High School, which is a little bit of ways, but it was great. It was eighty-five, eighty-five students down there, leadership training from ten AM till two. It was a nice bus ride back. Mix, boys and girls. It's great. They've got some big plans.
Just that experience, Ms. Hazelwood, who's our cosmetology teacher right now, was saying that just that drive, and Mr. Payne also saying, just that drive, coming back, how the kids just kind of talk to one another, and how they seem to grow as young adults. Moving on, our goals. Every year, we look and evaluate our programs, where it is our, where we think we need to go as far as taking care of the needs of the students, supporting the teachers, and meeting the needs of our community. So just very briefly, I jotted these things down. What are we looking for as far as goals for our program right now? Love to see an HBAC program. I said the four-hour retire second time, that's one of my goals, that we're going to have that, because I think it's a real need in our community. Secondly, we'd like to add dual enrollment course offerings in current and future areas. This state is looking at focusing on this with accreditation. This is something, again, I would love to see a whole lot more. We would love to see dual enrollment opportunities for career and workforce development students in current offerings and programs that we hope to offer in the future. Currently, what we are hoping to have as far as dual enrollment in next year, we're looking for in first management, culinary arts, and accounting. Automotive repair, I would think that will be in the future, not necessarily on-site for us, but going to a community college to take. A goal would also be to expand our programs by adding staff. Our kids want to take these classes. And with, you know, certain classes, you have a certain cap. If you're in a lab situation such as Mr. Payne's class of culinary arts, you have a cap, say to reasons of twenty students. So in order to have as many sections as possible, we need more staff. So in order to have as many sections as possible, we need more staff. So that's what we'd like to add, is more staff for these programs in the areas that we mentioned. Also, a big focus of ours is to review our middle school programs and to reorganize and align them, the course programs with the high school. And pathways. So in general goals. So I've talked a lot. I'm not usually one to talk a lot. I usually, probably a more effective listener than I am to talk. So I'd love to hear any comments, any questions that you may have. And we've got a team over here to help too. Yes, sir.
You mentioned a lot about numbers and specific numbers for each, each category. Are the numbers down or are they trending upward, downward? How far back have you started?
And I've just come back the last three years and then post-COVID. Just, actually, most of those areas are going up just a few points.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Of course, numbers have remained the same as far as the offerings. But students taking just a few, just about a few numbers, probably. That's 10 or so per category.
Okay.
But not going down, the kids are going up.
One other question, it's on the main channel, my inner Robert.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Well, I took that.
You, I've heard several people mention community partner. Do you have a list of community partners or any that you'd like to mention now?
And Mr. Payne could probably list all of his partners. There were, we had some of them in those pictures. I don't have a list, but I can share those with you.
I have over, probably 36 business partnerships.
That's awesome.
It's essential. They are very giving. The partnerships we build, you never know when they're going to show fruit. Last year, one of the apprenticeship programs donated $50,000 to our program, which is great. Is that going to happen all the time? No, it's not. But these relationships, they want to help. They want students. They, they, I mean, we, if I may, the, when she was talking about our numbers, our numbers are going up, but we turn away students because I'm, I mean, personally, I'm one person. So I can only teach certain amount of sections. And when students select their classes, they get with three choices. Let's carry it. So it's your first choice, second choice, third choice. So if you wanted to take electricity or building trades, first two, but you weren't able to get that, and that puts you not in the class. So you're trying to catch up. So if we could expand, it would be awesome. I'll get off of that. But I mean, that's why we say, because we do. We, I mean, I had, this is like 100. I mean, it was so many kids and I can only take so many. So then they take their second choice or their third choice. So we want to make all the parents and all the students in the class they want to be in. Is that, if you can remember when you were in class, if you wanted to be in that class, you did a whole lot better than if you didn't want to be in that class.
It's important to realize too, that with these, with many of these courses, not all of them, but OSHA puts a limit because of safety. And so most of the classes are capped at 20 students max.
And I would like to say that I would like to talk to that person that said 20 was a good number when you give them all saws and.
Right. What's your, what's your student load now in electrical and building trades?
I'm almost at 100 kids, give or take.
And the average, the classroom size is restricted to 20 students, as you said?
So I teach six sections because they, they want my class so much. Normally, we teach, and tell me if I'm saying this wrong, five. But because of my classes and such demand, I've been at Power Tan since 14 and it's only one year that I didn't teach six. And that's debatable why, but that's in the past. So every year, I'm teaching six, but we're still turning some students away because I can't. And that's just me. I mean, other teachers the same way.
Yeah. Is electrical and building trades a full two-year commitment by the student?
It's, nothing we have is a full two-year commitment. It's year to year. My hope is that if you take either one, the first year, that you think I'm so awesome that you want to take second year. But that doesn't always happen because it's not a good fit. And it is high school. And that's the thing. I mean, you, you shouldn't have to make a commitment for two years if you. I mean, I've had kids take electricity because they wanted to learn how to wire a radio. Unfortunately, that's not what we do. We, we learn electrical theory and we try to push it toward the apprenticeship. When you go to building trades, we're teaching electricity, carpentry, plumbing, and masonry, those four things in one year. So it pretty much breaks down to one per nine weeks. We do a little bit there. When you go to the second year, it's a double block class because Department of Ed said the second year is always a double block. So then that's taking sections away from me being able to teach.
The young men that were in the graduation last year from electrical, 15 of them, they, they had two years under their.
Two years under their belt, yes, sir.
In order to have that electrical graduation.
Well, yes, they, they finished the program. They were completers and they got their certifications. And more importantly, everyone you witnessed were offered employment. And I would, the electrical ones out of that, all of them, and it's only been a year, but all of them are still where they're, where they went. I was telling the superintendent earlier that looking at the numbers through the years, it's about an 80 to 85% guys that go through that program are now electricians, master electricians. I mean, it, it is such, but that's just electricity. It could be HVAC because for every electrical business partner I have, and I do have some HVAC business partners because there's so much electrical in it. But it could be any of them. I mean, because the contractors, they need workers. And they, and they have told me that they prefer ours because when they come from Power Tan, they've got a work ethic. So that's, that's not me. That's, that's the raising of the. And so it's good stuff. We're sitting on a goal line.
At HVAC, do you need more space? Is it a space issue or?
No, we can do HVAC within the space that we have.
You just needed instructors?
Well, and you've got to have some equipment to make it work. You know, it's have things to work on.
Yeah, yeah.
So the other question is that you say you want to expand the programs by adding staff, but do you have the infrastructure for it? So if you wanted to add a staff for cybersecurity, computer science, I mean, do you have a server room that they could work in or?
We're looking at different alternatives to where they can have a sandbox, yes, that they work in that keeps them away from anything that we wouldn't want them to get to.
Hack and change their proof?
They know what happened.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Good stuff.
Quick story, my daughter was one of Miss Butler's cosmetology. She went to the Skills USA and won all kinds of awards. She owns a salon in Millithian right now. And last year, it was Virginia Liver Magazine, she was voted best. She does wedding venues. She did, she got best hairstylist for wedding venues in the state of Virginia. So that was a product in Miss Butler's. Don't need you.
Congratulations, you know?
Yeah.
Thank you. Did she share that with Miss Butler?
Oh, she knows more well, yeah. Now, she's been, she's came back to the school and give several speeches to students every year, so.
Thank you. That's what's valid. Coming back from the community. Thank you.
Will you send Miss Butler to Alex McClung's?
Uh-uh, thank you, yes, sir.
And if I may, the business partner, I mentioned the $50,000 and that's just an outlier, obviously. But these business partners and electrical, and I can speak to that firmly because that's what I was. I mean, there's nothing, Tally Electric, to call me and say, hey, can I come by the school and go, hey, $4,000 for the EMT for your kids to bend and practice on? I mean, they want to give, and I mean, we just got to give them the opportunity to do so.
Lots of group love.
Yeah, maybe we should call, you know.
Everybody in.
A closed session.
Be a sleeper and meet.
That's right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
I could probably tell you Jim Henderson building tricks stories for hours.
I've heard, I've heard, I've heard a few of those.
Give us a little dirt on him, that would be.
Are we adjourned?
Yes, we're adjourned. We're 2:00.
And Mr. Kenny, can you do the invocation, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We thank you for being here this tonight.
Request to postpone agenda items, additions, deletions, or changes in order presentation.
Mr. Perv.
All in favor?
Aye.
County administrator updates?
Yep, good evening, a few updates tonight. One is, I think you, everybody's probably aware, we had prepared a project a couple of years ago to make safety improvements to the Route 13 and 60 intersection as well as extending down to Academy Road. Tried through Smart Scale previously for that. It wasn't awarded, but we did apply last year to CVTA, Central Virginia Transportation Authority for some of their competitive funding and got $5 million, which is about half of the total $10 million project cost. And we've again applied for that under Smart Scale this year. And I think with some improvements we've made to the project as well as bringing half of that funding to the table, we'll hopefully stand a good chance of getting the rest of that funding. We should get our first indication early part of the year when VDOT will release their preliminary funding plan for Smart Scale. But since we have that $5 million in hand, we don't want to wait around for the rest of it to get started on some of this. So we've contracted with Timmins to do project administration. So they're going to start doing the surveying, developing the construction plans and doing the permitting for that. And hopefully, we can start to build out some of it in phases while we wait to get the full VDOT funding as well. And we also expect we'll be able to do that a few years sooner, doing it this way than doing it as a VDOT administered project through Smart Scale. So again, we've executed that contract with them. And next step will be a kickoff meeting with the Timmins engineers to, and VDOT to formally get that project going and start seeing some movement soon, hopefully. And then, any questions on that?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Good, Miss Power.
What, what's the amount of the contract?
The contract is $708,000.
$708,000?
And that would come from that $5 million, yeah, of that. And the Smart Scale estimate to have VDOT perform that same work, I believe, was maybe 1.1 million or so. So doing this would hopefully come at a cost savings, which as we've seen with other projects that costs increase, it wouldn't be bad to have a little bit of cost savings built into a project estimate.
Any right-of-way issues in this first phase?
No, I would say no issues we're aware of. There will be some right-of-way acquisition, but that's a part, a normal part of really virtually any road project. And so that would be a part of what Timmins will be doing is handling the surveying and then the right-of-way acquisition as well.
Do you anticipate no disruption to the roadway or the intersection in this first phase?
Yeah, no. And then just wanted to share some upcoming community events. We'll have the Second Annual Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony at the Courthouse Village Park. That will be Thursday, December 5th, starting at 4:30 PM. Then the Annual Christmas Parade, that will be Saturday, December 7th, 3:00 PM, also here in the Village. Parks and Rec will be helping put on the Holiday Market. That will be at the PLC Gym on Friday, December 13th, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. Reminder that because of Christmas, our next December Board of Supervisors regular meeting will be earlier in the month. So that's going to be December 16th. And then this Friday, we'll have a grand opening for the new Wawa at Winterfield Road. Their doors will open at 8:00 with the ribbon cutting ceremony at 8:30 for that long-awaited Wawa opening. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Brett. That brings us to our first public comment period. The board will now hear from the public on any topic, germane to county business, other than those items scheduled for public hearing, which have their own comment period. Speakers who wish to participate must sign up before the public comment period begins, providing their name and address. Speakers will be announced by the board chair to approach the podium to speak. The public comment period is limited to 30 minutes. Each individual will have up to three minutes to provide their comments. Please respect this time so others may address the board. The board requests that all speakers maintain an environment that promotes listening and respect and that speakers refrain from cursing on specific individuals or groups or using vulgar, rude, or threatening language. Please begin by stating your name and district and direct your comments to the board as you hold, not individual members, the audience, or the staff. First up, we got Jim Carver.
Thanks, good evening. Can you hear me okay? Yep. Yeah, Jim Carver, I live in District 5. I live at 4245 Stagger Creek Drive. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to the board tonight. Speaking on a top, I think, speaking on topic 10 Bravo, primarily on the comprehensive plan working group, since it's not one of the public hearings I'd offer him at the initial comment period. Couple other things I wanted to address first. So thanks to, I wanted to thank Ms. Morissette publicly. She held a town hall at the Landmark Center a few weeks back. I think I counted over 40 folks there at the session. It was good to cover the entire spectrum of topics. Thought it was good dialogue and it's just refreshing to see all sides of the aisle there at the session. So I appreciated that. Also noticed, I think the agenda came out Wednesday afternoon, late, about 16:30, 17, about 4:30, 5 o'clock in the afternoon, which I understand is an improvement. I was out of town last week, but it was good to see it before Friday or Saturday so I could have a little chance to take a look at it. I didn't get a chance to read through the whole thing. So I'll hit on my primary or 10B on the agenda. Comprehensive plans, working group or the citizen working group. Just wanted to offer a few comments. I read through it briefly. I will read through it more thoroughly and send all the board members an email. One comment timeline, I notice, I think you're looking to commence in January of '25. And I noticed a kind of a stretch, a goal for the committee or working group to come back to the board on or about the April timeframe, but with a finished product later in December. So I would just remind everybody, I, you know, it's good to have that goal of April for the back brief, but I would look at a conditions-based briefing back to the board versus kind of a timeline brief. Let's make sure we, you know, it's got good conditions. We've met all our goals and objectives on that. So if you have to delay May, June, July, whatever, let's do it right. I noticed specifically public involvement was called out. I appreciate that. Just a few comments in that area. I noticed it was going to be available to the public. I think there were going to be minutes in public feedback incorporated, et cetera. But let's, let's remember to have meaningful public engagement. Not just, you know, a list of comments that people might have wrote down on a piece of paper or we took some minutes and then that's synthesized or digested by the board at a later time and it may get watered down. I really think we need to really look at making sure we have a strong public involvement in a meaningful way. I noticed you were going to have kind of everything incorporated by December 25 was your goal. You know, I know it's squishy and subjective, but what does that really mean? How are we going to factor in public comment and meaningful comments from the, from the public? Also, would, final part, my 11 seconds here. I take a hard look at the makeup of the working group. I didn't get a chance to read it very thoroughly. I don't know that I know everybody on the board, but take a good look at that and be ready and willing to adjust the membership during the process if needed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Brian Allen?
I think he wants to wait.
Gotcha, understand. Stevie Barham.
Stevie Barham, District 3. Oh, a couple of things. The last meeting, thank God it got voted down by changing the Conservation Easement subdivision thing. Thank y'all for voting that down. I asked y'all, I see we got this, you know, I just realized we have a comprehensive plan or group being put together, I think for the comprehensive plan, I believe it sounds like. Oh, and kinda like he said, I would look at the people you have on it. It looked like it, I'm gonna say what it looks like to me, and a whole lot of people have called me today, phone been ringing off the hook. Looked like it's kinda padded heavy in one direction. You got 17, 1800 people, voiced their concerns about what's going on in front of my neighborhood, Brantway Forest. I don't know if any of them are on it, but I would definitely have some of those people on it to give you a true blend of what the community is thinking and what they believe. And if y'all gonna change the comprehensive plan, and the reason I say that, is me and Mr. Powers had a conversation after the little three-minute show that cleared him of all wrongdoing, here and there, and I didn't speak for that. And he asked me, what do you want, Mr. Barham? I said, follow the comprehensive plan. That's all I asked, follow the comprehensive plan. He said, don't you realize this would be better for you to have the residential there? I said, no, it's not the comprehensive plan. He said, it would help your business, give you more customers. And I told him, I'll clean it up. I don't use the bathroom where in hell I sleep at, excuse my language. I live here, I'm part of this community. Few extra houses, 150 extra houses ain't gonna make or break me into a millionaire. I got customers from all over the region. But please, you're gonna do the comprehensive plan and change it and get into that. Because he also made the comment, well, so other words, if we change it to a multi-use, you'll be happy. I won't be happy, but if that's what y'all decide to do, I'll have to live with it. One thing I ask, if you can redo the comprehensive plan. Put on your big boy pants or whatever you wanna call it, stand up, stand in front of the public, go through the process, it'll take a year or more, and let the people tell you what they think and listen to them. You may have your mind made up, you may change it to whatever y'all looks like it may want to be, but please listen to the public on that, because I think you're not gonna hear the answers you wanna hear. And please look at putting people on this advisory committee who will give you a broad spectrum of the public, not just a few people that seem like they want development, or they wanna do this, or they wanna do that. Thank you very much, y'all have a great Thanksgiving and hope to see y'all December 16th.
Thank you, sir. Steve.
My name's Steve Ridgeway, I've been in Virginia. I came here with Allied Power Generation, designing power generation stations back in '95. I've done all kinds of things, aerospace engineer, basically in turbine engines and stuff. I understand a lot about this data center and the power and the water that's taken. I'm a little disappointed in Powhatan, I'm just getting my feet wet in this, because I've just seen the direction Powhatan's going in lately. I haven't spoken in front of anybody here for 10 years, and that was with the school board, when they said, kids, you can't say Merry Christmas, kids, you can't give out cards. Well, we won that one, they were stealing childhood from our kids. Well, Ms. Morissette, I'm in District 5, you're my rep, I'm sorry I missed the, I really didn't look into stuff enough, I missed the town hall you held, but I did leave you a text message and a voicemail. I know you're busy, we all have lives, and you didn't get back with me. And one person that did happened to be Robert, and he went to Rising Ground with me, he spent two hours of his day talking to me. Now, I don't agree with his policies, I don't think we wanna be Pump Road, we don't wanna be 360. I lived in Chesterfield when I first moved here, I got out of there in three years. And I think the citizens of Powhatan, everybody works for us. You tax us, we pay your bills and we want you to represent us. I think maybe some referendums could be done that needs to be considered, like maybe in some of the things we're doing here. It's real hard to find out what's going on unless you spend hours on the internet. I was trying to get a lady, we were gonna set up a site, put everything about everybody, the voting records, everything that people could find easily to see how they're being represented, because that's why you're here, you're here, you're here. We're all here for the people. And there's a lot of things that need to be looked at, and maybe I could present something. Ms. Shiflett, I talked to you the other day, I gave you FOIA requests, it's been 10 days, I hadn't heard a peep. I asked to talk to your bosses, I hadn't heard a peep.
Address us, sir, please.
I hadn't got a peep. Okay, well, I just hadn't gotten a peep out of anybody. So I'm only here because I'm concerned, and I really appreciate everything all of y'all do, because you got lives, you got things you gotta do, and we all have our own ideas, we all have our own thoughts. But some things, very important, like the data center, the rezoning, I talked to a lot of business owners, and they're not really for it, and especially the rezoning, that's the one, one people, that's, I mean, keep Powhatan great like it was, it's gonna be like a MAGA movement if, if people really get upset. I mean, think about it, our whole country's fixing to turn around because of JFK and just look at all the things fixing to change, for the good, in my opinion. So I'm looking to maybe, I'll make some referendums that could be considered, like, I got 12 seconds. Maybe being able to let people vote, have Powhatan, put out a flyer, let everybody vote on some major issues to see really how your people, because like, people don't know how to get hold of you, or their lives are too busy to be able to do that. And I'd like to draw up some stuff and maybe present it to y'all and have talking on the table. Thank you very much, I appreciate what you do, and those are my concerns, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Keith Dearing.
Keith Dearing, District 3. Fascism, fascism is when an elected official does what they want, no matter what their constituents want. And that's what I felt when I spoke with Robert Powers. He told me there's.
Please don't point out one individual, sir, please speak to the board as a whole.
Okay, I'm speaking to the board. I said I felt that when I spoke to Robert Powers, I wasn't speaking to him. I asked him if there was any way to reconsider his vote on the data center, my brother builds them for a living. He told me, you do not want one in Powhatan, Virginia. It would take a small nuclear plant to run it, the water is astronomical. He builds them all over the country, he makes a lot of money doing it. When I told him there was talk of it, that was his answer to me. And you all need to realize that. So what if we make $750 million, what, to, to, so we can blow it on other things? No, we have an opportunity to be a community to Chesterfield that allows people to live rurally and not cluster and not in traffic. And you all need to realize that, and I'm here now, and I'm awake, and I'm gonna keep talking to everybody to help stop these ideologies, as Steve Barham said, stick with the plan. Mr. Powers stood in my driveway a year ago looking for my vote, and he lied to me. He told me he wasn't up to all new, changing codes and, and all this. I wanna keep Powhatan, Powhatan, he said to me. Well, that was a bold-faced lie, and I have no respect for him at this point, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak at the first public comment period? Get a chance to sign up. Not seen anyone that closed first public comment period. That brings us to consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Appointments.
All right. Excuse me, Agricultural Enforcement Advisory Committee, we have two appointments tonight, one for the position of producer, one for landowner. Both of the incumbent members have applied for re-appointment, and those are the only applications we have.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Morissette.
I would like to make a motion to reappoint Wilson Danone to the AFD, he is in District 5.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Danai.
Make a motion to reappoint Bob Riley, District 1, AFD Advisory Committee.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, one position on the Department of Social Services Advisory Board, the incumbent member has applied for reapplication, and that is the only application we have for consideration tonight.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Danai.
Make a motion, we appoint Lynn Lapierre to the, on the Board of Social Services.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, first item under new business, discussion of acquiring a Vinity software for the Treasurer and Commissioner of Revenue's offices. So about three years ago, we implemented the new inner size resource planning software suite to cover essentially all of the county's functions, going with Keystone. So again, three years in, overall with most departments, it's, it's working well, schools has actually added it as well. But one issue we've always had is with, particularly the way we prorate our tax bills and collections. They have struggled to make that work for us, and the Commissioner and Revenue and Treasurer and their staff have had to do, you know, extra work above and beyond just to get our bills out and try and maintain a level of quality for the citizens and customer service. But we, I think, given that they're all, attempted to make it work, but they've been investigating the Vinity software, which is something they actually favored at the beginning, but we wanted to go and try with one package for everything rather than a couple of different programs. But I think they've, they've looked at it seriously, we've looked at it together and recommend now going to the Vinity software for their particular functions, believe that will get us back to the level of customer service and response and quality that, you know, we in the public would expect. So requesting the board to approve that, and both the Commissioner of Revenue and Treasurer here this evening, if there are any questions as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Ms. Kenny.
Mr. Sheridan, I have a couple of questions. Um, so I was looking over the charges and I didn't see anything about post-insulation support.
Yeah, so that, I believe, we think that would be around $90,000 a year for the ongoing maintenance service contract, so that would be provided through that, which would have to be budgeted in FY '26.
Okay, and then I guess on item number five, conversion support, it says based on an estimated 700 hours of conversion supporting a discounted rate of $210 an hour. I need a new profession. Build monthly is required, but what if they complete it under 700 hours? I assume we only pay them for whatever work they complete.
Yeah, we, and we have a call scheduled with the Vinity to talk some of the, you know, details if we do go ahead with this, so we can ask that question then and make sure. But also would want to bring your attention, that is their, their work and their customization for conversion that would be required. I think there would be some as well on Keystone's side, because again, we're still gonna retain that for our permitting, our utility building and et cetera, so there would be some interface that needs to be put together. So we would expect there would be some cost from them as well. But then dropping those two modules eventually in the future, we'll need to continue them for next year, but then dropping those should have cost savings as well, but they're.
So then on the Keystone and the Vinity, joining, I guess is a better word, is that figured into this $418,000?
I believe on a Vinity side it would be, but any customization or work that's need to be done on Keystone's side would not be. So that, that would be essentially an hourly charge from them for whatever it takes to provide that conversion.
So something we would also need to approve.
Correct, unless we do have some savings from the original ERP project. So we would use that, then we exhaust that, and even more than, yeah, we would have to come to you for an appropriation or a budget to cover that.
And I guess this is my final questions, and I think you've already answered it. So for Keystone, we're not having any issues with permitting, financing, human resources or school?
No, and I think I failed to put it in here, but mentioned also the public utilities uses it as well for the utilities building. So, no, again, those, those functions are fairly standard from county to county, so we've been able to use them. Yeah, well, and no, no plans to drop them or migrate to a different software for the other functions.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Powers.
Mr. Sheridan, extricating ourselves from the Keystone module that we're replacing with Vinity, is there any additional penalties that they're gonna impose on us?
No, no, and we have a call with Keystone and their leadership last week, and I think it was good that, understandably, they've put a lot of work into, you know, trying to make it work, but, so there was some disappointment on their side, but no, no contention, nothing like that, you know, they pledged that they're going to, wanna see us successful and, and work with us. And again, we're still tied with them on the other software programs, so, you know, we both want each other to be successful and work together, but nothing like that, nothing penalties. No, no.
Is there any money unexpended that will be credited back to us or be used in the conversion?
From them, I would say no, but again, there, there could be a cost savings once we drop those two modules from the package of software that we get from them. That wouldn't be a this-year thing, because we wouldn't either run the two systems concurrently until we have Vinity fully up to speed, then drop them, but say if it's FY '27, if we're able to drop those two functions, which we pay for, then at that time, we may realize the cost savings.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Morissette.
Mr. Sheridan, are there some names of some other area counties that are using this Vinity?
Yes, and that's something in investigating this and, and looking at it to make sure it is the right thing. Both the Commissioner and the Treasurer have looked at a bunch of them. I, I think they've met and spoke with their counterparts in other localities that have that software. I don't have exact names off the top of my head, but if you want, either, both of them could share, but they looked at it exhaustively, I would say, to make sure it is the right thing and not just a good sales pitch. You know, they've gone and talked to the people actually living with it and using it to say, you know, does it do everything that, that we're told it will? And the answer they've gotten, I think virtually from everyone, is it's a very good software package for those two offices, where some of the other ones we were looking at are more general, they work for everything, but they're not necessarily the best in class for just that, where Vinity is much more specialized in just what they do.
Okay, and, and the main thing is because we were having a prorata problem?
Yeah, and again, if, if you want more details, I think either of them could share. I would say that's probably not the only thing, but that's from the beginning, one of the key issues. And, you know, we, we have always made them aware that that is how we do it, but I don't believe they had worked with a locality that did that previously. So it just, it has continued to be more difficult than I think either of us envisioned when we set out three years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Powers.
One last question, Brett, and I think we covered this when we met with Jamie, I just don't remember the answer. And that is, you're gonna use this software off the shelf, you, you don't envision a lot of customization?
Correct, yeah, I, I believe it's pretty much ready to go. I think if there's any customization, it would just be in that crosswalk to make sure the two programs talk to each other, but otherwise, we'd be taking it turnkey without having to have custom programming done to work for us.
Okay, good. I see Becky shaking her head.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would just love to, love to hear from, from either the Treasurer or Commissioner of Revenue about their, their thoughts publicly, if that's okay.
Jamie or Becky. I know they could be happy after tonight, so hopefully.
Okay, so Jamie has graciously allowed me to go first. So we've been having an issue with Keystone since day one, essentially. A month, maybe two months into the conversion, I noticed it wasn't gonna work. My staff was very displeased with the service that we were getting. They would come in during the conversion, while they were attempting to train us, they were actually modifying the program and just doing a quick fix on it. They had never, we were the first prorating locality that they had dealt with. And as they have noticed, they had many more tentacles than they had anticipated. And they thus far have not been able to work all of that out completely. I have not been able to do a billing cycle by myself. We have always had to rely on them to transmit a file to us that we could correct and review and at this point, three years, then we should be able to do our own billing. And, I mean, it's, it's just an everyday effort on my staff's part to try and get the information out of the system. You know, they changed us, we, we used to explore all of the. They changed us, we, we used to explore all of the, the accounts through either a map number or a social security number. They changed us to it, it's an account-driven, account-number-driven system, which hasn't proven not to work. We have people that are still able to pay current year taxes without delinquents paid, which should never happen. And there's just several issues with being able to access information readily when the customer's standing in front of you. And within talking with, I have spoken with both Washington County, Dinwiddie County, and they have recently converted to Vinity and are absolutely 100% pleased with it. Hanover County has been on it since pretty much the inception of Vinity, and they love their system. The city of Manassas Park is currently going through a transition, and they are transitioning from Keystone to Vinity. So we're kind of keeping a close eye on them to see if they have any issues and how they, how they feel with the new product. And, but, you know, we'll definitely keep you up to date with that, because that conversion should be complete here shortly. But, Jamie handle it now.
So I think what I bring to the table was, I was here when we did all the original ERP process, and the previous Treasurer and myself, Vinity was our number one choice then. But it didn't do other offices. It's specifically designed just for Commissioners and Treasurer and kind of that finance piece of it. We, the Treasurer at the time and myself, agreed to try and use a ERP system that works the whole county. And it just hasn't worked. I mean, proration has definitely been the number one problem. It was before the conversion. I mean, it was two months before the conversion that we determined their proration part didn't work, and it still doesn't work correctly today. You have two members in this audience that I get regular emails from about every single year in their transactions. Their sales aren't up to date, you know, a property they've sold. We cannot get the system to work to send the bill to the proper owner in real estate. I mean, it's just not acceptable. I mean, and these are things that in my mind, if I was that company and my client told me that, I would be stopping everything else that I had going on and trying to fix. We're three years in, that's been a problem since day one. So, you know, it's kind of enough, enough is my point. And again, Vinity was my number one choice from the beginning, it just didn't really fit into the budget at the time. There was some customizations that maybe they had quoted early on that were very expensive and kind of put them out of the price range. But when we go back and have gone back to them and looked at the process, we can use their off, as Mr. Powers calls it, off-the-shelf product and meet all of our needs and not have to pay for any customizations. And that would have, in my opinion, changed the original ERP process, for me anyway, because it would have been much more affordable, and I probably would have pushed harder and not conceded to go with a countywide ERP, so.
Any, have you reached out to Hanover, Dinwiddie, any issues that they've had with the system?
So I, I did that in 20, in 2019, 2020, when we were going through the original ERP process and heard nothing but great things about them. We've gone back to them since, like Becky mentioned, Dinwiddie has gone to them since then, who is who. We modeled our proration process after, so, I mean, it's, it's, it just kind of fits.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
I know Keystone hasn't worked for these two offices since I've been here, so they know how I feel about it. What kind of action do we need tonight, Brett?
Uh, yeah, just looking for a motion to authorize staff to execute the contract.
Second. Roll call vote?
Mr. Denali?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Ms., Vice Chair Morsette?
Aye.
Chair McLean?
Aye.
All right, next item under new business, establishment of comprehensive plan working group. So this with the strategic plan update ongoing and looking to have that done around the end of the year. Anytime you have a new strategic plan, likely your comprehensive plan ordinances will need some modification to make sure the two are in harmony and help achieve one another. That will be around the time also that we're getting into budget season. So I believe the intent here is to stand up a group of citizens to look at the two documents, compare the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan, and then advise the Planning Commission and Board as to what kind of changes might be needed to bring those to an alignment. And that would be just a recommendation, of course, it's the Planning Commission who then prepares the comprehensive plan and the Board who later is adopted with public comment, input, and facilitated discussion in between all throughout that process. One thing to note, since we published this agenda, we did get some comments from the public that they would like, not just minutes of the meeting, but they would like these meetings to be recorded as well, which spoke to you all, and everybody was in agreement that that was something we should be doing. So that would be recommended to be added to the process as well.
Any discussion ordinance? So over the, the, the working group, as they're doing this, one of our constituents said it may, might have to require some changes along the way. Some people may drop out, some people, so, but to keep that in mind, I agree with that. But I'm good with it. Need a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Ms. Kenny.
I make a motion that we establish a group, comprehensive plan citizens working group, as per the Charter.
Second. Roll call vote?
Mr. Denali?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Vice Chair Morsette?
Aye.
Chair McLean?
Aye.
Onto public hearings for this evening. The first is ordinance O 2024-17, and this relates to rezoning 24-06 REZ. Mr. Brian Allen requests to rezone roughly seven acres of a 19-acre parcel from A-10 to CC Commerce Center with proffered conditions.
Hello, members of the Board and public. We have three hearings, land use cases. The first one is a rezoning, as Mr. Sheridan stated, a rezoning of roughly seven acres from Agriculture 10 to CC, with the establishment of a antique store, kind of a niche business here, antique store. Also would do some servicing of vehicles and also sales. It is not solely a, you know, I would say older antique cars, but there are maybe some specialty cars. So I have a quick, just a few slides I'll show you. I think you're familiar with the property, just so people at home and the audience, to make sure they're aware of what we're talking about here. And I'll just... Let me just start the show here. So we can see here, this is 24-06 REZ, Mr. Brian Allen to rezone seven acres from A-10 to Commerce Center. You can see right here is the, the 19-acre parcel. Here is the line that would delineate between the, everything here to the south, fronting on Anderson Highway as proposed to be rezoned to CC Commerce Center. The rest of the parcel would remain undeveloped in A-10. You can see here to the right, this is a, a view if you're on 60 going west. And this general area is where the applicant is proposing to put the, the shop. And also the existing house would be utilized as an office. So again, just the plan, the applicant request was seven acres of the 19 acres from A-10 to Commerce Center, per the submitted proffers. The use is limited to an antique store, automotive repair, and specialty automotive sales lot. A 50 by 80-foot building would be constructed on the site. This building would house the antique store and repair shop. Just by the way, the new building would require a pattern book application. The existing dwelling would be utilized as an office to support these uses. And I won't read all this, but as long as, as far as the split zoning, the code is clear that if you have a conceptual plan, if a parcel does have two or more zoning districts on it, it is allowable. We also have a list of proffers that are in your packet, eight different proffers. One, most notable being, it is limited to these three uses. It also would have to follow the concept plan, which is also in the packet, I'm getting ready to show you. Now, to the right, here's the, I go to the left here, here's the actual location of the building, here's the existing house. This is the, kind of roughly what Mr. Allen is looking at, this type of structure. It's not proffered, that would be this, but again, you know, you have to have the pattern book application, and just, he hasn't ordered this, but you can ask him. I think he's, he's confident this is essentially what it will look like. You can see here, the, the rezoning boundaries, here's the area. You would notice that there are two areas for outside display vehicles. That would be up to, as per the proffers, no more than 10. There's also a customer area parking, and here's the location of the building. The, here's a setback line that's required, just that yellow line, that's a setback line that's required in the CC from the, the road, the front property line. Now, you will notice that the actual display vehicles here is the house would be roughly in this area. So you're kind of well back off that 75 feet, maybe even 150, 175, but it would be even, it would not be any closer than the existing home. And behind that would be the customer parking area. And then it kind of in front, again, kind of short showing the, the garage here, but also, you know, you might have four out here, you might have six here, but 10 would be the limit, and these would be the general areas. So I know there's been some concern of being, being too close to the road, so that's a specific, specific proffer offered by Mr. Allen. Looking at the comp plan, the site, one, the existing zoning. You can see it's Act 10, we have some residential utility, there's Commerce Center, kind of sporadically dispersed through, through the, this portion of Route 60. And you can see here, this is existing zoning, my mouse is on now, then here you have the, the comp plan, which designates this area as rural areas. Again, with, with some commercial center still dispersed throughout this, this area. I'll just point out in the proffers, this, in 2019, this subject property was downzoned from RC to A-10. I'll just highlight, the proffers limit the outdoor car sales not to exceed 10, 10 vehicles. The vehicle should be in areas shown in the conceptual development plan. At any given time, the total number of vehicles parked on the site, to include owners, customers, employees, and those displayed to be sold shall not exceed 27 vehicles. Now, that is a high number, but 17 of them are, are part of the code that requires, you know, you do a formula, I think it's 300 per square foot. You take a 4,000-square-foot building, and this is where you get this 17 spaces that are needed, and that's fine. I, I personally just, you know, with a smaller scale, kind of niche business, I know we do a lot of business online, I don't think that you're going to see 27 cars on that site at any given time. And you probably have some intermittent customers, people coming to pick up things, maybe some, maybe some people who are window shopping. But really, it's sort of a, a destination-type, type business. So 27 could be on the site, but I, I just don't suspect that will be the case. A site plan, so you would have to come back if this rezoning is approved, a site plan would be required to be approved, private land disturbance taking place. The site plan will have a, will have a commercial entrance, and need, a need, a need for a tapered turn lane shall be determined during the site plan supplemental. So he's already proffered a, a, a commercial entrance. You know, had a lot of conversations back with VDOT with this, and when he does, when he turns in the site plan, they'll also have a warrant analysis that will be sent and reviewed by VDOT. It is possible that that turn lane would be required. So that kind of goes to the next phase, again, we're lumped into the site plan, some of the, the more, you know, the engineering, the site layout. And again, of course, also the, the design of the entrance with the warrant analysis would be handled by staff at the site. Well, I guess that's all I have on that right, right now. Have any questions for me as far as on this application or anything I can answer?
Mr. Allen, did you, did you want to speak now? Did you want to speak during? Okay, all right. I know you tried to earlier, so, yes.
Mr. Chair?
You're fine.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Ms. Kenny.
I just have, I just have one question, Legan, so, and maybe for the applicant too. So VDOT does require a turn lane or a taper, are you, are you able to provide for that if they recommend it?
Okay, thank you.
And I will just, just note that the Plank Commission did vote to approve three to two in, in favor. I know it's in the report, I just wanted to make sure that was.
Yeah, I'm not, this is deny here, but this is approved with other ones, so.
It was approved, that's a mistake.
I know.
Mr. Chairman?
Can we do public comment?
Yeah, 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 please.
Uh, would anyone like, anybody like to speak for the comment period? For ordinance 0204-17.
Jane Pendergast, District 4, 1700 Cape Way Road. This rezoning is being requested in what most of us know is the Gap Area. The Gap Area was specifically left as rural area to help maintain the rural character of Powhatan, and to have an area that would be undeveloped and have unimpeded, unimpeded traffic flow without complicated intersections or stoplights. The comprehensive plan analysis in your packet notes, the proposed zoning does not match with the rural area designation of the 2021 comprehensive plan. The key here is, it does not follow the comprehensive plan. And letting this applicant rezone to Commerce Center will potentially open up the entire Gap Area to other applicants to make the same request. The approval of this application, as proposed, could set a new precedent for commercial development in the Gap Area. How do you say yes to this applicant and not to the next one? The staff recommendation brings up the RC zoning change done in April 2019, but this should not be a consideration for this applicant because it didn't directly affect them. The applicant purchased the property in 2022 under the current A-10 zoning, which was two years after that RC zoning change. This is not one small inconspicuous business. This is three businesses with the addition of a 4,000-square-foot building. Antique store, auto repair shop, and specialty car shop. And if there can be 27 cars out there, at some point, there will be 27 cars out there. It is noted that there is a clear line of sight for the entrance, but this negates the consideration of the traffic coming out of Lower Hill Road at the crossover, which does not have a clear line of sight, because 60 East sits below 60 West at the crossover. I come out of there all the time, it's hard to get out of there. Please follow the intent of the comprehensive plan and do not open the Gap Area to Commerce Center development and deny this application. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Sam Thomas, District 3. Excuse me. I come before you tonight to encourage to vote in favor of the rezoning at 37 Anderson Highway. Not only as a proponent of the rezoning, but a passionate believer in the power of small business to shape and strengthen the community. Small business is the backbone of any thriving economy. These are the, the business owners who know who their customers are by name, who open their doors with the goal of making a difference. They bring more than just services, but jobs, character, and strengthening relationships between residents. In addition, money spent at local shops tends to stay local, creating a ripple effect that touches all corners of the economy. that touches all corners of the economy. I ask you to consider not just the land use, but the bigger picture, the people driving by, knowing that a local family is there to serve them. Think of a young person who could walk in and get a job and begin to see the possibilities in their future. I urge you to think of this as not a piece of land, but an opportunity to build something real and lasting in our community. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm going to close, public comment period.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Board.
If I could, I'd like to call our attention to page 22 of the packet and to the, the staff prepared. And if you'd allow me, let me read this short section to you. According to published 2023 VDOT traffic data, this section of Anderson Highway currently carries an average of 25,000 vehicles per day. Per VDOT statistics, the section of Anderson Highway, approximately 1.98 miles, experienced 10 vehicle accidents on Route 60, two of which resulted in serious injuries. In 2022, the same segment of Anderson Highway saw eight vehi- vehicle accidents. So, Mr. Chairman, with that in mind, I'd like to move that for the purpose of ensuring the general safety of all those using Anderson Highway, I move to approve O dash 24 dash 17 rezoning, a rezoning of approximately seven acres from A-10 to CC, with all proffers as listed in the application amended to include two additional conditions to include one installation of a commercial entrance, to include a channelization island to ensure a right in, right out only, and construction of a 200-foot turn taper lane.
Do I get a second?
I'll second.
Any comment, public board comments?
Can I ask this question?
So just to make sure I understand, you, you're proposing to add those to the conditions?
That's correct.
Okay. But since this is a rezoning.
Right, so this is a rezoning. The, the applicant has voluntarily proffered. Those proffers are not in the application, so we wouldn't be able to add them.
Wouldn't be able to add what?
Proffers, conditions. This is a rezoning. You could do that in the next case, which is a CUP.
Okay.
The applicant could certainly offer to proffer.
Well, as it, as it stands now, the addition of a turn lane is an administrative decision at site planning. We will, we will have no input at that point. Is that correct?
We're going to send it to VDOT with the traffic study, traffic, traffic counts, the warrant analysis, and they'll determine at that time if, if it's warranted. So that's, it'd be administrative. It wouldn't be as if the staff, like we're, you know, we would send to VDOT and get their opinion and they say, yes, it's warranted, then we're going to say yes.
Far, far be it for me to quibble with our friends at VDOT. But the, the, the standard of traffic counts does not address, it does address, but it does, it doesn't holistically address the issue of safety on, on, on 60.
Yeah, so it's traffic generation that, that they're looking at. And also, you know, distance from other entrances. There's, you know, speed limit, which is 55.
We all travel up and down 60 regularly and at, at rush hour, morning and, and evening. Both lanes or bumper, bumper to bumper, people traveling 55, 60 miles an hour. When someone is, is traveling east on 60 and wants to make a turn into this property and those folks are, maybe not rightfully, but are looking at their phone or checking their radio or whatever distracted, and they slow down and want to make a turn into that piece of property, there's a definite safety issue. I'm not quibbling at all with the fact that the, that traffic count may, may be low.
Right.
But it, it doesn't, it only takes one to have a problem. And if we're going to maintain safety and flow on Route 60, commercial businesses cutting, having cuts on 60 need to facilitate the flow and safety, and that's going to require turn lanes. And I understand that this is something that the applicant may not be proffering at this point, but it's something that I think is very important for this board to consider.
Think that's a very fair point.
So how do we proceed with this, Kelly?
Well, it doesn't look like the applicant is, is proffering that. So you have to vote on what's before you. We, we can't amend an applicant's proffers.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Denai.
Regardless what ordinance we're talking about, I just want to make sure that we're creating some consistency in our planning. Whether we're talking about this ordinance, the next ordinance or whatever. And, and I understand that maybe occupancy may be different. What vehicles or vehicle types are turning into a, a commercial business may be different, but I just want to make sure that our planning is consistent across the board. That's all, sorry.
Anybody else? I got a motion. I got a second. Roll call vote. No?
In a new motion.
New motion.
Vote it up or down or defer it?
All right. Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Kenny.
I make a motion that we approve the rezoning case 2406 rezoning for a seven acre partial of tax map from Agricultural 10 to Commerce Center with proffered conditions as presented.
Second. Roll call vote.
No.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Vice Chair Morset?
Aye.
Chair McLemone?
Aye. Motion passed.
Uh, the next two cases relate to the same property. They are resolutions R 2024 dash 67, which relates to conditional use permit 24 dash 09 CUP, Jinx Towing. And then resolution R 2024 dash 68, CUP 24 dash 10, Schaefer's Grading, Landscaping,
Good evening, Charity Gold Planner Two. I'm going to go try to share my screen. So this evening, I'm going to present the Jinx Towing and Schaefer's Grading projects. I'm going to present both CUP requests at the same time. I think the idea may be to have one presentation and then one comment period, and then you can do your motions separately after that, if that works for you.
It'll work.
So the project is located on the south side of Anderson Highway at the Academy Road intersection. The property is zoned Commerce Center and it's surrounded by commercial and residential uses. The applicant requests two conditional use permits, one for a contractor's storage yard and one for a truck hauler business. Those, both of those uses will be located on the same parcel. You can see the parcel here on the aerial. It's kind of highlighted. It's, this is an old image, so the, the parcel's been cleaned up quite a bit since this was taken. And on, next to that, you'll see the adjacent land uses in the area. The purple represents the Commerce Center and then the green is the residential. So this is the site plan. It's not an actual site plan, but kind of the circulation plan that was submitted by the applicant. It's showing the purple arrows are showing the proposed circulation. So it's an existing site. The site currently has three entrances that can, that they can use. They're proposing to block off the middle entrance and replace that with landscaping so that, can you see my cursor right? Yeah. They'll replace that with landscaping. They'll retain the access on the left as egress and ingress. And then they'll restrict the access on the right to one-way entry only. So VDOT has, has reviewed this plan as it's shown and they are supportive of it as shown, and they haven't requested any additional modifications. They've only asked for the land use entrance permits, which is standard. So this, you'll see in this image also how kind of the site looks now. So it's cleaned up a lot. They've got two yards. So the yard on the left is where the Jinx and Schaefer's business is. The yard on the right is where the, I said Jinx Towing, the yard on the right is Schaefer's grading. I think the staff identified that there may be some need for lighting, landscaping, screening, so we've asked for a condition that they submit a site plan after they're approved. We'll review it and try to get some of that stuff up to code as much as we can, given that it's an existing site. So a little background on this, I believe this project was before the board in September. In September, the board asked that the item be deferred due to some safety concerns with entrances along Highway 60 and asked staff to kind of look at the smart scale project that was happening or is being planned in the area and how the, any potential turn lane might affect that project. So subsequent to that, we, the applicant prepared and gave us a warrant analysis. And that analysis assumed 20 peak hour trips. And based on that trip amount, a taper lane would be required. We did discuss that with VDOT. They've indicated that that 20 peak trips is an estimate. It's based on ITE and land use, you know, estimates, but that really the only way to know for certain how many trips are coming in and out of the site is to have a traffic engineer come in and actually count how many are coming in, lay the pipes. And they, VDOT expected that the trip amount would actually be much lower. But with that information, staff consulted with the Timmons group, who's working on the smart scale project. And out of that conversation came kind of two alternatives. One would be whether or not that site, we were first trying to find out if they would conflict with each other, and the answer is no, they can be done independently or together. There's pros and cons with either. If, if, if that turn lane was kind of included into the smart scale project, it would cost less just because of the fact that you have the crews out there and the engineering, they're already doing the work, so that cost is less. You can ask the applicant to pay a fair share toward that, but those improvements don't get done for a number of years. If the applicant were to install the taper on their own, it would be more expensive because they'd be bearing the cost of the engineering and the designing and whatever, you know, other things are going on that they need to do. But it would happen more quickly. But with that information, we did talk with the applicant. He indicated that he could not install the turn lane due to the cost, but that he would be open to fair share or giving up some right away if needed for the future improvement. So that said, we've come back to you with very similar conditions as were previously presented. For the most part, they're the same. We've added one condition related to not having any vehicles displayed for sale. That's condition six. And amended the expiration date so that it's, the use permit would expire in 2026, December 2026, instead of where it was previously 2027. The idea being that we could get a sense of, you know, how the use is operating actually, and then y'all could make a decision about whether or not they could continue at that time. So in conclusion, the, the requested CUPs are condition, are consistent with the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance and with the conditions of approval, the site design would be consistent with the development standards. Staff is coordinated with VDOT and VDOT is supportive of the plan as presented and without a taper. And the VDOT has also emphasized the trip rate provided is an estimate, and they expect that the peak hour trips would be much lower than what we've presented. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Chairman, if I could. Could you bring that, the, the picture, the flow picture, traffic flow picture again, The, the question I have is the easternmost entrance, which would be taking traffic going east on 60, turning left. Unless that, unless that entrance is squared up, basically the traffic will be turning against oncoming traffic. I'm led to believe that state police and VDOT would, would frown on that.
Yeah, I, maybe the applicant can speak more to that when they come up, but I, VDOT didn't mention anything about the angle of that being problematic, and they have seen it.
They were, I think they, I'll just chime in. I think there were, we did talk about that. They're a little more concerned, I believe, that people from Academy Road might go straight into it. So they, talking to Mr. Dunigan, they were, they were okay where it was and really did not prefer that it be, it could be originally, they talked about moving it down, realigning it. They were not in favor of that. They were in favor of kind of keeping it like it was. Forget exactly the reason, but we did go over that. That was stated. I think that was a violation of the order. Thoughts?
So they're concerned if you line it up that somebody's coming, coming down Academy is going to cross and, and not, and just fly right into that lot, is what you're saying?
I mean, that's, that's, I believe that's kind of what was recommended. I mean, it was definitely communicated that we would rather it stayed this way or just those trucks that instead of going down doing a Huey, they can go in that way because it's just going to be one way in there. So that was preferred to keep it like that.
How do you see monitoring that?
There's a turn signal there, so left turn only. Well, you're going in, traffic will be stopped. You can see where the cars are stopped right now. So we're not going into any oncoming cars. We're going through a turn signal, turn left only.
Woody, I understand that, but how are you going to monitor that they're only making entrance, they're only entering?
We've, 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 as part of one of the conditions, we were asking for signage on it to limit it to.
Right, who's going to monitor that?
Right, well, the neighbors will.
The neighbors, okay.
No, I mean, honestly, when nobody's going to monitor it, we will know it's a problem if somebody lets us know that it's a problem, and then they would be in violation of their conditions. Then we would take code enforcement action against them for that.
More comments? I open a public comment period.
Mr. Chairman?
Let me open up public comment periods.
For, for both, just make it clear.
For both, for both of these resolutions. Open up public comment period for two oh four, two oh two four dash six seven to two oh two four dash six eight. Anybody like to speak? Not seeing anyone, I close public comment period.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
If I could. Are we closed? And public?
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to move that for the purpose of ensuring the safety of our citizens as they travel on Addison Highway, I move to approve R 24, 2024 dash 67. Cup Jinx Towing is amended to include a condition for the applicant to construct a turn lane taper of 200 feet in length within six months of the cup's approval. And, and provided the taper lane is completed, the initial term of the cup be extended to five years. If the taper lane is not completed, then the cup expires in six months and is rescinded.
Did I hear a second? So, next.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Denai.
Question for Legan, if you will. How is this safety improvement, road improvements in the future going to affect the layout of the entrance and egress?
Actually, I think Sherry might be better to talk about that. Because she's really been involved in that.
Let me see if I have an image that might help.
Didn't need to throw a wrench there.
So it's probably going to be hard for me to share it either, but I'll try to just describe it, I think. And I, as I understand. So, it's probably gonna be hard for me to share it either, but, um, I'll try to just describe it, I think, and I, as I understand it, the smart scale project isn't an actual project yet. Um, it's kind of in discussion, and I think there's been plans that have been prepared, but I don't know that those are finalized either. So the idea is that, um, that people coming off of thirteen, when they're making a right onto sixty, that they're gonna do an acceleration lane on sixty. And I think currently, the way it's shown, that, um, acceleration lane stops south south of Meeks Motors. So the idea is people are gonna be trying to merge over to the left to make a U-turn or whatever. I think they're restricting movement coming um, toward thirteen as well. So if, if we, if the smart scale project comes, comes, gets developed and Jinx were to do a taper lane, the kind of limits of that skip striping would meet, but there might be a gap in pavement between the two of them. So they could develop it so that the excel lane went all the way up to the light. Um, or they could leave it as it is and Jinx couldn't separately. Does that help at all?
Yes.
But it wouldn't, it wouldn't hinder?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Kenny.
So I'd like to make a motion, uh, regarding Jinx C U P twenty-four dash zero-nine to approve the C U P for a period of two years with the condition that the applicant will conduct a traffic study during that timeframe.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call vote?
Mr. Denai?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Nope.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Vice Chair Morissette?
Aye.
Chair McQuong?
Aye.
That was for both, so. I'm gonna open up second public comment period here in a minute.
Mr. Ridgeway, Steve.
Steve Ridgeway.
First, uh, what I meant earlier, I just wanted to make sure I got it.
Got you, sir. Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak during the second public comment period? Not seeing anyone. I'm gonna close second public comment period. County administrator comments?
Uh, yeah, I'll just, uh, restate again, uh, for anybody that wasn't here at the beginning, some of the, uh.
Yes, sir. We gotta make a motion on Schaefer's.
Do both, do we?
I thought that's what you said, but if you want to make a, make another motion, you can.
Just to be safe.
Yeah, just to be safe.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Schaefer's twenty-four dash ten C U P. Again, with the, uh, C U P to expire in two years, or to be up for renewal in two years, and that the applicant will conduct a traffic study.
Second. Roll call vote?
Mr. Denai?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Nope.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Vice Chair Morissette?
Aye.
Chair McQuong?
Aye.
Sorry about that. I thought we combined it too.
That's it. And just to clarify for the applicant, if they come back for renewal, it'll just be one C U P for the property, so it won't be two different cases.
Thank you, Kelly.
Okay, so, uh, I was just gonna restate for, uh, anybody who maybe wasn't here at the beginning, the upcoming, uh, community events. Uh, second annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony, Thursday, December fifth, four-thirty P M in the Village Park. Annual Christmas parade, Saturday, December seventh, three P M in the Village. Uh, holiday market, Friday, December thirteenth, four to seven, in the P L C gym. Uh, and, uh, grand opening of the Winterfield Wawa this Friday, November twenty-second. Uh, doors open eight A M, ribbon cutting eight-thirty. That's it.
Thank you, sir. County attorney comments?
No comments, Mr. Chair.
Board comments?
Mr. Chair, I have comments.
And Mr. Morissette?
Um, this is to address Mr. Ridgeway, who said that I did not get in touch with him. On November the fourteenth, I sent an email to you. I will read it. It says, "I have been dealing with over two hundred emails that have bombarded my in inbox. I have not been able to access my emails until tonight. I will reach out to you over the weekend, or once I catch up with my emails. You can also call me," and I gave my number. You're welcome.
We're good. Anyone else?
Yeah, um, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Kenny.
So I just have one comment regarding, um, Jinx and Schaefer's. They have done everything the county has asked them to do from the beginning. The biggest problem was they got caught between some miscommunication between the previous planning director and then this planning director. So I will not punish an applicant for something that was partially our fault. The traffic study will determine in two years whether they require a turn lane or not. Hopefully by that time, the smart scale project will be far enough along that if we do decide to extend the acceleration lane down to thirteen, which I would be in favor of, you know, based on some feedback I got from the town hall, a lot of folks were worried there wouldn't be enough time to get over and make a U-turn if you needed to, given the length of the current lane. And at that time, you know, we would not use taxpayer money, you know, to help the applicant, um, you know, take advantage of that tape return. They would just need to pay their fair share. So I just wanted to go on the record that, and just thank them. They've, they've done a wonderful job improving that site. It's in my district. It looks phenomenal, and, um, that's all I have to say on it.
Chairman? Go ahead, Mr. Powers.
I, I, I too, I agree with, with, uh, Mr. Kenny. I, I empathize with the history and the circumstances that brought us to this point. And I, I understand that, I understand that. But I, I think that safety on, on sixty trumps those concerns and those, those process issues that we have been, we just recently just mentioned. Um, the fact that we're going to do a traffic study is fine. But our friends at V dot look at trips. They're not looking at the types of vehicles that are gonna be going in and out of the, that, that location. And when the types of vehicles that Mr. Jinx has and the Schaefer's is bringing in and out of there, I agree, there's gonna be very few trips in the course of, course of a day. It's the safety issue of those large vehicles as they slow down, as they gear up and enter, enter sixty on a road that people are traveling fifty-five and sixty miles an hour on. And I think that safety situation really, uh, needs to be an overriding concern. I do appreciate, uh, what the applicant has done to the site. Absolutely, and they've been good citizens in that regard. But that, that does not reduce nor in any way, in my view, alleviate the fact that we have a safety situation there. I'd also remind everyone, as, as many people in this room have reminded us, that, uh, as other developments occur in this county, the traffic on sixty will increase. So if you look at what's, what's gonna be not just tomorrow, or in the two years of this cup period, but you look over a long period of time, I would suggest to you that, um, safety needs to be an overriding issue, and a turn lane is, I think, necessary.
I'm going in on a happy note, and wish everybody a happy, uh, Thanksgiving. Spend some time with your family. Uh, do we need a closed session?
Yes, sir.
Meeting adjourned.